Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Douglas to order. It's June 5th. Mr. Moore, the Chairman, is here. I am the Vice Chairman, David Portis. Will we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have one announcement concerning our police department. I have two notices or two awards here: Detective Sergeant Travis Gould of the Douglas Police Department and Lieutenant David Brown. And I think the Chief is going to give us some background on the awards.
Good evening, everybody. So this was an investigation that took place over the summer months last year. It was led by Detective Sergeant Travis Gould and was worked on by numerous departments: Blackstone Valley Drug Task Force, Southern Worcester County Drug Task Force, detectives from the Massachusetts State Police and the DEA out of Worcester. So the investigation took place throughout the summer, and on September 6th, we had enough information to execute a couple of search warrants, one in Oxbridge and one here in Douglas. So as a result of the search warrants, we were able to seize a half kilo of cocaine, over 10 pounds of marijuana, one handgun, one AR-15 rifle, ammunition, and approximately about $20,000 in cash. After the investigation, six adults were placed under arrest and two juveniles were arrested. So at the New England Narcotics Officers Association conference this past week, Detective Sergeant Gould and Lieutenant Brown, along with other officers from those agencies that I mentioned earlier, received an award for that investigation.
Excellent. That's great. Thank you.
It was a great investigation, great work, great team effort. They definitely did.
That was a slapshot?
That was slapshot. Yep.
Please let them know how happy we are. That's wonderful.
I will. They did great work. And like I said, it was a team effort. It stretched throughout Southern Worcester County, Oxbridge, Douglas, Oxford, Dudley. So we all worked together and got it done.
Excellent.
Great work.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I should have asked this earlier. Is there anyone here for anything that's not on our agenda? Excellent. Open the hearing on the new package store wine and beer license, the Easy Mart. Do we have somebody here?
Yes, Tony is here. You can come up. Yep. In your packet is the application for a package store wine and beer license for the new managers or business managers of Easy Mart Foods, which used to be Extra Mart. We did send out notices to a Butters. Notice was put in the paper. The application is complete. And I did give you some backup from the last time that this came up before the Board.
Which was back, what, 2012?
2012.
Go ahead.
I'm just here representing them for an alcohol license. I don't even know what to say. They're just interested in putting alcohol in the store, beer and wine.
And the property changed hands recently, correct?
It did on Wednesday.
Okay.
They, um, they, there's enough room in there to do it. I don't have a big turnover on staff. Everyone there is very responsible. That works for me. So.
Suzanne, they've complied with everything they need to comply with?
They have. I don't know if you were, if you were to approve the license, I don't have any, like, hours of operation or anything like that. I would need to get that. But I don't also know if any residents are here that were notified, if they need, want, like to speak. After, depending on whether or not you approve the license or not, because it depends on whether or not you feel there's a public need. If you feel that there's a public need and you approve it, then it goes to ABCC for their final approval. If you feel that there is no public need and you deny it, then they have five days that they can, I think it's five, five days to appeal it to ABCC.
Understood. Thank you. But we want to make a motion and open discussion, or just open general discussion?
You already opened the, the public meeting, so we can hear any comments that people may have.
I would ask that you ask everyone to state their name and, and address, please.
Exactly.
Could you slide a microphone down to her?
My name is Beagle Valley, and I am an owner of Diggers Liquors. And we've owned and operated Diggers Liquors for the last 12 years. So we are obviously concerned about an issuance of a new license because the new license would be literally four doors down from our current location. Our primary concern is, is there a public need for three licenses within the span of, it's maybe a mile and a half between us and...
Yeah, I did actually give them the...
I don't think it's a mile and a half.
The map.
I'm sorry, half mile. It's like a half mile.
I gave them the maps of...
Yeah, so I'm, so that was like one of our primary concerns in like, will the issuance of this new license bring in new customers, or will it more cannibalize the customers of the two running liquor stores in the center of town? And then, of course, we're, we're wondering how detrimental this would be to our business because our sole business is beer, wine, and liquor. We don't have anything else. We purposefully limit the amount of candy and snacks and tobacco products just because we want 21 and over in our store. So we, we purposefully do that. So we don't really have a market for anything else but beer, wine, and liquor. And the customers that come in are looking for those products. So, and then our other concern was, we just kind of did this in 2012, and it was denied. And have any of those reasons changed? So. It is a grave concern to us because we are so close. So we did want to just kind of make that heard before you guys meet your, your ruling.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Yes. Anyone else like to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing, then?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it.
I think maybe this, maybe we're missing two of our members. Maybe we continue it.
We considered that.
Because I was on the board back in 2012 when it was denied. And the reasons why it was denied back then was the fact that it was so close to the other two.
Right.
Liquor stores. There was concerns about parking and space in the store. And those concerns for me haven't changed.
Okay. Suzanne, is there anything preventing us from continuing this to our next meeting so that we have hopefully a full board? I know Kevin will be back.
I think by law, we have a certain amount of time that we have to act on the license. So it would be up to the applicant whether they wanted to okay having it postponed until another time.
I do think it's a good idea to have a full board vote on it, but from what I'm hearing from a resident expert, I think that's a decision that you make.
Can I leave and make a phone call? Or no? I don't feel good.
Are we actually up against the deadline if we...
Yeah, it sounds like we have to act within a specific period of time.
Yeah, if you're supposed to, by law, you, we have to act on it within a certain amount of time.
And what's the certain amount of time?
Well, I will say that it's already been a long time because the application was not complete when I first got it. So we had a little delay with that. I want to say it's within, it's, it's, I, I don't want to quote it right off the top of my head because it's very confusing. So as soon as I get the application, I have to have a, post it in the paper and notify Butters within 10 days of receiving the application. Then the hearing cannot be any sooner than 10 days from the time that they were notified. And I think it's within 30 days that it's supposed to be acted upon. Again, don't quote me.
Can we step the better back to later in the meeting and she can make a phone call?
Yeah.
I mean, we've closed the public meeting anyway. I think we could just delay a vote.
We can just...
Okay.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, yep. All right, just come back in and we'll...
Okay, thank you very much.
Right. I agree. That's a good point. All right. Item one is temporarily tabled. Item number two, one day liquor license for the Beagle Club.
Chris Nelson is here for the Beagle Club. They've had this license before. It's a special one-day beer. They're going to have a beer truck.
Mm-hmm.
And a, I'm sorry, in a designated area next to the track. And this is a license that, that you approve, and then we, we notify ABCC. I did not have any, any comments from anyone except the police and fire who stated that they may require these licenses.
I assume there's no issue with that?
No, 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 no.
I move, we don't have a public hearing on this right now?
No.
I move approval of the request for the, so one day?
One day, right.
One day license, the Beagle Club?
I'll second that motion.
Before we go any further, is there anyone here to speak on that, the Beagle Club license? I'll call the vote, then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
When will I find out if I need police officers and firefighters?
Uh, you would call them.
Talk to the Chiefs.
I think...
We can talk once you have more details about the people you're expecting.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I think somebody has already been down here to the station about details. Welcome down and see you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, you want me to mail it, or you would come in for it?
Item number three on the agenda is an application for the Douglas Orchard and Farm for an entertainment license, Monday through Saturday only.
Right. This is an application for entertainment. Any type of live entertainment has to have a license. Sundays requires a license through the state, so this license does not cover Sunday. In the other town businesses that do have an entertainment license, other than the club, where you're not aware of what they're doing, you have them notify you.
Okay.
Grill on Main, you're notified basically by what you have on their sign out front. You're posting stuff on your website, so maybe that's, that's how we keep...
And we do have signs as well. And we're going to give you a list, which I think is helpful.
It's all over. It's on, um...
Well, let's, well, let's see who we are first. So, that's how.
Douglas Orchard and Farm.
So, I'm Erin Sokrat. It's my daughter Elena. And Elena is actually running the store for the summer. She's a college student, going to be a senior next year at Pittsburgh State. Anyway, so we bought Douglas Orchard Farm, my wife and I and our family, about two years last February, February 2016. And we, I think people well noted, to some degree anyway, of what we're doing over there and how we're trying to encompass a sort of a family atmosphere and a place of learning and healthy foods and basically everything that's to do with farming as well as agritourism for, basically, the sustainability goes beyond just our, our solar sustainability to stay in business and to keep it afloat and not have that land developed. So we're about 26 acres now. We've, under agreement to purchase eight and a quarter more. And we had built a pavilion, which you may have seen on the signs, says "At the Pavilion at Douglas Orchard," which is basically a, in a Rondack-style 20-by-14 stage. And where somebody could actually have a wedding someday, or they could do yoga there with goats or without goats. So I don't understand that, but anyway, so. And we are, have a lineup of concerts. And, and part of this is that we've partnered and they've, the Cultural Council, the Douglas Cultural Council's reached out to us and have moved their venue from the gazebo to our farm, where we actually have bathrooms. We have ample parking. It's extremely quiet, which is good for performers and listeners alike. And we have handicapped accessibility for the fact that everything is on grade there. And we also have our country store, which we now have some sort of novelty ice creams, and we have waters in this. So there's concession that we can do when people are listening to a concert. They can get some drinks and things like that and use bathrooms. So we have a calendar here, and we are looking to sponsor, you know, have the events from Douglas Cultural Council and also some of the events by us. Now, we were charged, I think, five dollars is what we're charging. And, and it rears, you probably knew we had a concert there this past, everything went great. It was fine. You know, it was attended by, I think, 65 people. I had thought we'd get 150, 200, but it's, you know, I'm always the optimist, so. Start small, work your way up. Yeah, and it was a great time. So Elena, maybe you want to speak about our lineup here? Don't have to take a lot of time, but we can do this.
Yeah, no, we just have for the...
Can I hand out one of these?
Yeah, for the Douglas Co., Central Council.
I think we have it.
I gave them, I gave them a coffee left, right?
Oh, you did?
You can speak on it, but we don't need another coffee.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Well, I guess there's not much more to say on it, other than that, just bringing the community together, like having people just come. I think it'd be a good way to get the community together. And, I don't know, we had a really good turnout. Everyone, all positive feedbacks from all the families that came and all the other people.
Classic rock and roll when kids were dancing, families were there. It was, it was really great. And so, so anyway, that's what we're looking for, to have sort of a, only Saturdays and Sunday nights for concerts?
Well, I think, well, no.
No, did I say that Friday and Saturday nights? I knew that. But Friday and Saturday nights only?
Making sure you're listening.
And so, we are getting solicitations now from singers and performers. Once they start hearing about this, they want to be there. They want to support the farm. And so, you know, we'd like to be a venue there. And we want to, basically, we're targeting to be done at 10 o'clock at night. We're not talking about midnight, you know, so, you know, by the time the baseball socks are done, we're probably done. Actually, they're probably longer than us. So, and that's it, basically.
Do you have things planned into August or early September too?
Yeah, it's on, is it not on the list?
No, it is. Um, oh, well, we have, the last event that we have right now is August 25th is the, the Raptors, which is a live music band. And then...
Out of Connecticut, they're like the country duo. Yeah.
And that's, that's it for the summer, what we have planned.
For music.
For music.
And then there's a honeybee event, and we have the Pied Piper of pottery going in. That's through the Cultural Council. So those are day, you know, 1 to 3, quiet events. And, but at this point, that's the only addition to your list that you have in August is...
Yeah, the 25th.
Is the 25th at this point. And then, but we, we'll keep you up to date if we add anybody, you know, we'd like to add if we can, so.
I think it's fantastic what you're doing.
Thank you.
Innovation, what you're doing with the, the property. It's the real asset to the town. I think probably everybody's pretty supportive of, of that, to give a little oomph to the town with some of your, the things that you're planning, so.
Right. We, we reach out through Blackstone Valley and Central Mascrone and through the state. In fact, AAA, it's funny how they get those feeds. They have our content series on their AAA feed. And so it puts Douglas on, I mean, we don't need to be on the map, but I think it's important through, for growth in this town and, and it's part of it.
It's closer to being on the map.
Yeah, closer to. So, anyway.
Also, somebody in Douglas is looking for something to do. It's a nice, nice take.
Right.
It's closer than driving to Worcester.
Yeah.
I see an email in the file here that Chief Vincent has no issues. Chief, anything to add?
Thank you.
And we keep Chief up to date. In fact, I went into the station and said, you know, before, you know, that we had an event going on, and we would keep, if there was any issues, we would make a call. But, you know, I think we know, and I've been involved enough with this in the past to know when to say when.
Right.
You know, so, thank you.
You're going to have apples this fall?
It looks like we have, we have apples. I can't believe it. We got, well, I can believe it. We've worked hard on it. And, you know, we fertilized two years in a row, and now we have unbelievable grass, too. So, you know, it's like one of my products. Just have to mow more now, and it's like default, you know, so. But the blueberries look really good. We're going to have a great blueberry season. So, that's more recent, coming up in July, so. Thank you. Thank you. Everyone's been supportive. Appreciate it. Is there anyone's, yeah, is there anyone else here to speak on this issue?
If not, then I'll move that we approve the entertainment license for Douglas Orchard.
Second.
Wait by Mike, seconded by Hal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Please keep us posted.
We'll pick it up. We'll mail it to you.
Um, I'll pick it up. Come by. And here's some just things that you can put on your cars if you feel like it, some, some more cars and something like that, so.
He has a business right now.
He is. Appointments to the Economic Development Committee, capital and employee...
Do you want to go back?
I'm sorry. Did she, I missed you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Come on back up, please.
I guess they said, well, we'll do it tonight.
Do it tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Is there any other comment? Anybody else want to speak to the liquor license at the Extra Mart? Or Easy Mart? I'm sorry. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't know if Hal has anything to say. My, my only concern is I'm not sure what's changed since the last time that you came in terms of need.
Well, as far as the parking, there are usually tenants that we've slowly taken off the lot. We're not that busy. We're busy in the morning, and we're busy when the kids get out. Before, when I came, the problem was tenants from across the street were using our parking lot. They no longer use it. They cleared out the whole floor on the left side when the new company came in. They removed everything on the wall over there. So that's a big empty space now. So there's room on the inside. You can drive by. You'll only see our parking lot busy in the morning, when the kids are going to school, and when the kids get out of school. If anything, I have an issue with the kids on the bicycles that I'm out. But as far as the parking lot, it's pretty vacant now. That's...
Do you want to entertain a question from the audience?
Oh, I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Do I have to come up to the table again, or?
Just so people can hear you. There's no microphone back there, so.
No, I just, um, I just, I want you to reiterate. I've already said it.
There's not enough customers in the town for three liquor stores in the center of town. There's just simply not. I wish the other liquor store owner was here, but obviously couldn't make it. But with the competition of the grocery stores, the Wegmans, the Market 32s, the Macy's, business in town for liquor sales is decreasing. So to put one more license that close to those two stores will be detrimental.
Do you know why they sold our store? Because that store is slowly dying in sales.
So, but I understand, and I...
That's why they sold it, is because it's just dying.
So you're going to kill two other stores in town?
Well, no, I'm not saying that, but there's people that work for me.
Let me, let me ask this.
It will happen.
Have your sales over the past...
Thirty-three thousand dollars down this year.
Yes.
Then answer my question. So far this year, or, or 17?
It's been decreasing over the last three years.
Okay. And you attribute that to competition?
Absolutely.
You mentioned Market 32 and Wegmans and other places.
Well, and it's also the way that, just to give you a little piece of the liquor industry, like, we've been running the store for 12 years. The way that the orders have to be done now are, and you'll see it, if you guys, when you do your grocery shopping, you're going to notice that the 12-packs and the 30-packs are, you know, sometimes a better value at those bigger stores. Well, it's because they put these quantity discounts on, like, pallets of beer, which obviously, if you've been into Diggers, you know, we can't put pallets of anything back there. So we are on ordering on less of a scale. So we have to take the hit in the margin. And so that, between that and the, just the decreased foot traffic, because of all the competition in the area, to put more competition in the area would be not just, and I'm, I'm not just speaking, I am sort of being selfish, but I'm also speaking to the other liquor store owner, liquor store owners in the area. And that goes for the beer and wine license up the street from us and the one on the other tail end of the other side of, of the street.
And I agree with her as far as big business. The reason we dropped is the day Walmart pulled in. Our sales dropped over $1,000 a day, the day that they put that Walmart in there. And I'm just trying to make the business work. I have a lot of people that work for me. I'm blessed that they kept us. I could have left and managed another store. But I have Forrest who walks. I have Melissa who walks. I have a lot of people, and that's why I stayed, is for their job security. And our business is hurting bad over there since they put in Walmart. I can't begin to tell you, and that's why they sold twice in, in, in three years. This is the third sale.
I honestly don't think that beer and wine is going to help you. It's a, it's a tough industry. It's tough for the small guy. They're not going to be able to bring in the amount of beer that they need to, to like, keep the margins.
Then if you think that, then why are you concerned?
I'm concerned because I'm trying to stay afloat myself.
Right.
But you're like quarters down.
We're both in the same situation.
But I don't sell anything else. I don't sell gas. I don't sell anything.
If you give your point of reference, it's 264 feet.
From door to door.
From door to door.
I mean, what I'm getting clearly out of this is a dwindling market.
It's the equivalent of the old pharmacy.
Right.
So we're, we love the town of Douglas. Like I said, we've been business owners in this town for 12 years. It's a great town to own a liquor store in. We've always helped in the community and done that kind of stuff. But we are a mom-and-pop store.
Right.
And, and our sole retail is beer, wine, and liquor. So if you, if you take, if you put more competition in that, there's nothing, we can't offer anything else, is what we do. So, I mean, I understand that there's an outcry for Ex, for Easy Mart to survive as well. It just might hurt other businesses if it were to be the beer and wine sector that they, they took over, or they, they got into.
And that's my concern, that it's 264 feet, door to door. So there isn't a need for another license that close.
Like, it's not, and as for, like, we have our struggles as it is with, you know, running our business where it is, you know, and people have kind of learned to deal with running across the street, you know, and running back. And, and it's been difficult. We here on, you know, but it, we've, we're kind of a fixture there on that, on the corner, you know? And it would just be very, very difficult for us to continue that if there were just more licenses in that area.
Well, this board is sort of constrained. We have to, would have to make a finding that's in the public interest to grant another license. Usually, that's when you have a new mall comes in, and there's restaurants, and they need liquor licenses.
Or the population increases or something like that, absolutely.
Whole new thing. This is really not quite like that, so. Very sympathetic, and they...
I, I am as well.
Yeah.
I just, you know...
Things haven't changed.
Just happened to be that close to another liquor store, and that the other one down the street isn't much further away.
No.
I think on the board, we all want to be pro-business and new business as much as possible.
Absolutely.
But if a new business is, you know, merely going to act to the detriment of old businesses, I don't see the point, myself. Kind of have my eyes open here a little bit, especially where, as Hal pointed out, what we're voting on is, in the public interest, whether there is a need.
From the public standpoint, actually, not. We don't make a finding that you need it, which you do need it. I guess, that's obvious, too. Both of you need it. But that's really sort of outside of our interest, is whether there's enough demand in the community to warrant granting another license. Probably not there.
We wouldn't be acting in the best interest of the town if something that we did drove one or both of you out of business or close to that.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak, or?
If not, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the liquor license request from the Easy Mart.
Second.
Can you please state the reason, being no public...
Can you please state the reason, being no public need?
Yeah, we do not, not see a public need for an additional license in that area of town.
Yeah, I just want it in the motion.
Yeah.
Motion made by-
Thank you, Hal, but I could have said that as well. I'm kidding.
Motion made by Mike Hughes and seconded by Hal Davis to deny the liquor license. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying the license say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.
Best of luck, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the agenda, item number five, appointments to the Economic Development Committee, capital and employee advising, insurance advisory. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Number five.
I'm on the wrong page.
Yeah, five or four.
Did I skip four? It's four.
Oh, that's why I was on the wrong page.
That's what, my fault. Item number four.
We never know with you though.
In your packet is, and actually, there's another one that I'm going to ask you to appoint also, the, was the insurance. There's another person for the insurance advisory. So start with the economic development. Robert Minarek is here. He has put in for the vacancy on the Economic Development Committee. And if you would, he's been supported by the committee. If you could please appoint him for a term ending June 30th, 2020. I don't know if you want to, he is here, if you want to.
So moved.
I just figured she said it, so I'd.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Go to work, get some business.
Exactly.
Yeah, we appreciate your willingness to step forward.
On the capital improvement, Cesaro Martinez applied for the vacancy as a citizen at large. This is a three-year term, where the department has their one-year terms, term ending June 30th, 2021. So if you could please appoint him for that term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have that one as well.
On the insurance advisory committee, typically employees, so we don't usually have applications from them. For the firefighter, Jake Luiz, he will be filling the vacancy for the alternate firefighter for the collective bargaining unit. For a term ending June 30th, 2019. These are one-year terms. And Emily Hoss, C O S T, she will be serving as the school committee, the teachers, I'm sorry, the teachers' union representative. So, same term for her, please.
To the same advisory committee.
Right, same advisory committee.
Thank you.
So again, so moved, as Suzanne presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Don't have any disagreement ever.
We can mix them up. And now on to the real item five.
Real item five. In your packet are the annual appointments that the Board of Selectmen makes. You have a listing of the entire board committees for each one. The ones in green are the people that have voiced their desire to be considered for reappointments. They have been supported by their board. The ones in red have asked not to be reappointed, or yellow have asked, red have asked not to be reappointed, maybe there aren't any reds. The ones that say no.
I see yellows and greens.
Yes. The yellows are, we're going to get to that one. And then there's yellows on the employee insurance committee. Those are positions I'm trying to fill presently. I will be bringing those back to you. The terms are in the chart, so if you could please appoint those openings with that term, except you had one we were going to hold.
One requested that you pass over the board of health tonight, and do that on the 19th, if you could.
We can do that. And I note at the bottom, we can vote to disband if we choose the school building committee.
Yes, and please do that also.
All right. Why don't we do that as a separate motion?
Just a question.
Otherwise we'll disband all our committees.
Disband everybody, we'll be back to.
So, you know, once we reappoint this evening, Conservation Commission is going to have two members. How is that going to impact our ability to?
So you've received applications, we've put them on for the 19th meeting?
Do we have enough applications?
You will at least have an odd number that will be able to vote.
Okay.
So, they have a little bit of a carve-out in the world of quorums. It's a majority of those members who are serving in a valid seat and, and in the meeting. So even if they're nine, as long as they get three and the vote is two to one, they can conduct the business.
Okay, so we will be okay after next meeting?
Okay.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to disband the school building committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. And I believe as a board, we're going to make one edit to the appointments, the Central Mass Regional Planning Rep. Do you have any suggestions, Mr. Hughes?
Well, that's after.
Well, that's after.
That's the next.
That's after. Do we have to edit this?
But I do have suggestions.
I knew you would. Do we have to edit this before we do one big motion, or?
No, because it's not in green.
Oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the annual appointments as presented by Suzanne, with the exception of the board of health.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it.
Talk to the CMR PC.
Right. I'd certainly entertain a motion, probably by Mr. Hughes, as to who we should appoint to the Central Mass.
It's an obvious choice, but.
We discussed this at length as, as an abbreviated board, a smaller board.
One of the things I want to acknowledge is what a great job Mr. Bonin has been doing this past year.
He excels in that position.
See no reason why he shouldn't remain in that position. I would hate to, to break up that run of his.
A run of confidence.
Yes, yes. And I think Mr. Moss would make an excellent alternate.
I think that's a wonderful idea. I'd certainly entertain a motion to that.
I'll second.
That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Any, any discussion other than what we've just had? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, thanks, we are rewarding them for their failure to attend tonight's meeting, but.
But it's become tradition.
It has, yeah.
You know, so we're just not breaking what you did.
Fail to attend at your own risk, if you're likely, I think, is the rule to follow. Item number seven, classification for temporary school employees under chapter 268A.
Mr. Chairman, as if we have not been down in the weeds enough tonight, this is way down in the weeds, I'll try to summarize it as best as possible. The Ethics Commission has determined that if you are a specific classified employee, a temporary employee, that your relationship with the town is a contract. Therefore, you are unable to take a financial interest in any other contract with the town without a 268A waiver. Where this hampers the school department is they may have people who are qualified to be substitute teachers, who are also qualified to be a substitute para. If they hire them under one contract, they're unable to lawfully hire them into the other position. So this is a technicality, but on advice of the Ethics Commission, the designation by the Board of Selectmen under this format would allow the provision to be waived and the people could be hired into both classes of contract. I think that's it in a nutshell, without having to go into this.
That is getting into the weeds.
So it would be a blanket vote that would cover any of those situations?
Though, though, I think the specific.
Or is it specific people that were?
I'm reading Courtney's email. All of their day-to-day substitute categories. Teacher, paraprofessional, I don't know what ABA stands for, secretary, et cetera. So really, all day-to-day temporary employees of the school department to be considered, quote, "special municipal employees."
I was looking for the language of a motion, and that appeared to be it.
Yep.
So it's so moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Mr. Wojcik, health insurance policy requested amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it was back in November, this board, in three consecutive readings, adopted a policy with respect to the way we manage health insurance policy eligibility for our employees. And it was the retirement of a long-term employee that kind of spurred that conversation because we determined we didn't have a written policy, we just sort of had a series of past practices and they needed to be written down so everybody would have a guidance. In so doing, we answered that one situation and we met the necessary requirement of having a written policy for opt-outs and waivers and all the rest. But we determined, after looking at the actual, real-life cases, that the policy was very narrowly drawn because it was very specific to employees who left here as eligible retirees in Massachusetts, but went to work somewhere else. Namely, that that person could someday, as long as they had no break in insurance, could return to the town's policy. The notion is that saves the town quite a bit of money because the health insurance for life for retirees is a very valuable benefit that people enjoy. If they were forced to drop it, they wouldn't. They would simply require us to continue to cover them, and so the taxpayers of the town are covering people who are covered somewhere else.
They would have double coverage.
They would have double coverage, and really have no benefit to the town. In reality, that same thought process should apply anytime anybody retires and is covered for any reason, whether or not it's employment. So in this case, the more recent case that sort of shook this loose, we had a retiree whose spouse still has an active plan. She has no intention of getting further employment in her lifetime, but she's still covered under her spouse's plan, doesn't need the town's plan. But will continue to require us to carry her if she's forced to do that and not be able to return if anything should happen to her husband's coverage. You know, any qualifying event would allow somebody to come back. So, we just basically changed the language here in section 5F. And there are asterisks, actually, in 5A, where we made some changes, and the copy is, even though it's, the red ink doesn't show up, it is pretty clear what has been stricken and what has been added. So instead of requiring that the retiree take new employment, the language be, the retiree does not defer his or her pension benefit. The retiree was enrolled in the town's standard health insurance offer as an active employee for no less than 30 days before retiring. The retiree does not vest into any post-retirement health benefit offered by a new employer. And the retiree provides a signed notice to defer, along with proof of coverage, not from the exchange, which is an important carve-out there. And the right of return is already in the policy, it's one time only, the employee may return. We tweaked the language here, actually made the language better by saying when that could happen, during open enrollment or in the case of a qualifying event. So that's what we're trying to do here. This, every time someone leaves, you know, the premium for this is so high, even at a 50-50 ratio, it still can be pretty substantial savings for the town on its health insurance bill. So, we're trying to manage that bill in every way we can.
So if somebody comes under their spouse's policy and then the spouse loses the job, they could come back?
Yes.
So it protects them that way?
Yeah.
What it keeps them from doing is keeping the insurance with the town just in case.
Right.
And having double coverage, that costs the town quite a bit of money.
Sure, so if somebody is 55 and they, they keep it just in case, we could carry them for 10 years before they're Medicare eligible.
Right.
So it's a pretty significant reduction, we think, of the long-term liability.
So if they were off for 10 years, they could still come back on? So what's the benefits to the subscriber to even keep it in reserve if you can hop back on?
So it's that peace of mind, because you're a retiree, you're a vested retiree entitled to the benefits when you leave. So now I know if something happens to my spouse, let's say we're divorced and there is no decree that says that my spouse has to cover me, I have something to fall back on.
It's a feeling of security that you have back up.
But in the end, we don't have to carry them if that's, until it's triggered.
Right.
Any other questions?
That would make sense.
So this would have to read two more times, so it would be on your docket two more times.
Very good. Approval of the meeting minutes from May 15th. I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes from the May 15th Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Your report, sir.
Mr. Chairman, a few things. We're very busy and we're not necessarily high-profile these days because we're doing a lot of cleanup, if you will, after town meeting and some of the changes that will be occurring. So, on the personnel side, we conducted interviews today for a billing department principal clerk. We had four candidates, all were strong candidates, as a matter of some discussion, but we'll probably be making the higher decision this week to fill that important customer-facing position. The second vacancy, we've been apprised of a departure in August. In August, of the payroll clerk, which is a very responsible and important position for the town. We'll be posting for that position as well and interviewing very quickly. We'd like to have that person start, the new person start while the old person is still here, so we're able to do a truly functional transition. We are also advertising now for the role of our information technology systems administrator, which many would be aware that we share with Northbridge right now under an intermunicipal agreement, which is expiring at the end of June. We've determined not to renew that. We've had two interested candidates, one's already done a walkthrough, and the other's coming tomorrow for a discussion. These would be small businesses that would be acting as independent contractors with the town for a sum that is in the budget, therefore won't require any change. But we think it might be a good idea to bring that independent contractor on, who's not on an hourly basis and will get a lot of things cleared up for us. And then hopefully we would be at a steady state going forward, once all the problems are resolved. The public may have seen a lot of cabling projects going on, so really kind of simultaneously, the town hall was rewired from category three wire to category six. And what remains for us is, our existing IT professional needs to install a few switches, and then the new person will migrate all of the wires from our existing workstations to the new, to the new switches, to take all the traffic off the server, so we can continue to work in a more modern way. There was also a small project involving the Cable Commission that occurred at the same time, so there was a lot of cabling activity here in town hall. That was, on the town side, grant-funded, so that $30,000 that was won in competitive grants was used for that. And it was that specific purpose that the town had applied for. As a result of town meeting, we're also engaged in a number of significant procurements. As you know, there were many capital items on both the Article 11 capital budget, as well as the contingent budget that was reliant upon whether or not the override passed. So all of those items now, we need to move in timely fashion. We're moving most aggressively on the highway department equipment because we want it all in place before the next snow season, the storm season comes. So that would be the chipper, the asphalt. So, that would be the chipper, the asphalt, you know, pothole repair vehicle, and the snow piles, the trucks. So, all of that will be put out to bid very soon. So, you'll see a lot of activity on combis and other procurement efforts to get all of that done. And I believe we're closing this week the bid process for the North Street culvert repair. So, we should, so far, so good, we're on schedule. Quite a few firms have pulled the package. We won't know who's going to bid until the day, you know, the deadline approaches. So, that's where we stand. Then one other thing I wanted to update the board on is every year, our property and casualty insurer, Maya, and I don't remember all of the exact meanings of the letters and the acronym, Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance. They provide the town with the benefit of, we get premium discounts the more training we do. And the notion, of course, is to be aggressive about that, to get the trainings done so that we reduce the town's bill. And we had a very good year this year. It seems like the program dates back to 2010.
Yes, that's when it started.
You know, there've been a couple of years where the town got around a $10,000 break on its premiums, but for the most part, the training that was engaged in by town employees saved the town between $5,000 and $8,000. It's pretty much the average. This year, we've earned the highest ever percentage reduction on all of our premiums, thanks to the town employees participating in those things. And I checked the math. The town stands to save, as a result of the efforts of its employees, $11,115, which is the second highest dollar total, but we have another month to go. Our premiums might still fall because at the present time, our claims for this year have been very good. So, we're in a very good position. So, I just want to thank my colleagues for sitting through a couple of long trainings that we wished could have been shorter, but it all accrues to the benefit. There were still some things learned, but it accrues to the benefit, has a direct impact on the bottom line for the budget, so.
What's the subject of the training? What types of things?
So, for most of the property lines that we have, whether it's general liability, the police have a specific line, boilers and machinery, our automobiles, major equipment, and public officials, which would basically be our arrows and emissions policy, those are the places where we can go to classes. Probably our best results were the public officials line. Some of that has to do with my being new and going to all the training for Massachusetts discrimination prevention courses. They all count it. So, I needed the training anyway, but it got, that got us a seven and a half percent reduction on that premium. And then on the property side, we get credit for a lot of, if we do a lot of self-inspections for inspecting our roofs or for inspecting our heating systems, and we do do all those things and regular maintenance runs, we get credit for that. So, there was a 7% break on general property. So, just happy that my colleagues and I were able to do something small but result in some sort of savings for the town.
It's good savings.
Excellent.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Any old business? Any new business?
Yeah, I have something, actually. Following the rather tumultuous two and a half override situation, we hope the town is coming together and I think both sides agree that there's a need for revenue enhancement. So, I'd like to propose that one meeting a month, we at least have that on the agenda and try to bring up whether or not it's a grant we're applying for, some economic development thing, just to keep it in the front, so we're not waiting a year or two. So, let's start now when things are fresh and try to do something that, you know, it's not magic to have it on the agenda, but at least it keeps us thinking that way and might give us a little more of a push. So, I would move that one meeting a month we have on the agenda, let's call it revenue enhancement, anything to bring new money into the town.
That a motion.
That's motion.
I heard I move.
Yeah, I did hear I move, but I wasn't quite sure. It needed to be a motion, but I'll second that motion.
Right. Any further discussion? I think it's for my part.
I think it's great idea, yeah.
We definitely need to, you know, advertise more what we're doing.
And this could also be during our, the public wants to speak on something, they could also offer any suggestions that would fit under that as well, even if it's later in the meeting.
Good. Okay. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have that.
Good idea.
Any other new business? Lacking that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at, looks like 7:58.